Good evening. Welcome to the first Finance Committee meeting, 2025. You'll notice there will be quite a few pieces of legislation that will have first reading, only reading, and be suspending, which is normally not the way we do that. However, typically this meeting, the first meeting of the year, there's carryover situations because the last meeting was the first part of December. We have almost a month in between meetings and business needs to keep moving forward. So we'll try to get this going and keep it moving as quick as we can. The first item I have to bring up is Temporary Resolution 1-25, a resolution to authorize the city departments to dispose of city property no longer needed via auction or internet auction in 2025 and to declare an emergency. And this is coming from Law Committee and Councilman Kreis.
Yes, thank you. Yes, this is a piece that the city needs to pass. It's required by the ORC that we pass it before we start to dispose of unneeded property via auction. And because we want to use the internet auction, or use the internet for part of the auction, we would like to get it passed soon so they can start, so the departments can start getting rid of that property. So we're going to ask for one reading with Mr. Bizcheck as my second.
And when is the auction temporarily scheduled?
They wouldn't.
When's the auction going to be?
Go ahead, Stephanie.
The internet auctions are ongoing, so they're constant.
Okay.
But the, the city auction is usually in September. It's usually the first week in September.
Right, I knew it was later on in the year.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next item is Temporary Resolution 2-25, a resolution to support, in support of the Ohio Municipal League's challenge of AT&amp;T's tariff application at the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio and to declare an emergency, also coming from Law Committee and Councilman Kreis.
Yes, this is legislation in support of a challenge filed by the Ohio Municipal League against AT&amp;T's tariff change. And Law Director Hall, do you want to provide more information on that?
Sure, I'm happy to. So the Ohio Municipal League sent us a notice like they sent all Ohio municipalities last week indicating that they would like to challenge AT&amp;T's proposed tariff change before the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. So what that tariff change would do would be to allow AT&amp;T to charge any political subdivision such as ourselves a municipality whenever they're required to relocate their utilities in our right-of-way. This is the City of Lancaster's right-of-way. And when they have to move their infrastructure so that we can put our infrastructure in, now they pay for that themselves. It's, it's a condition of being in our right-of-way. But this tariff change, which the Supreme Court has already said could override anything that the municipalities pass, would allow them to start charging us for moving their utilities in our right-of-way. And so this could add thousands and thousands of dollars to all of the utility infrastructure projects. And I thought it was, you know, pretty necessary to get this before you and to, you know, help support the Ohio Municipal League in, in challenging that change. If the, if the PUCO does nothing, then in 30 days, the, the tariff change just goes into effect. The goal is to get enough of these together that hopefully we can have the PUCO be willing to have an evidentiary hearing maybe and, and, you know, set aside some time to do a little bit more consideration before they just allow it to, to pass by attrition, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
And because of timing to join that, we need to suspend.
Right. And I will be your second.
Yes, sir.
Good. Next item is Temporary Resolution 3-25, resolution to authorize the Lancaster Police Department to apply for the 2025-26 Drug Use Prevention Grant, coming from Safety Committee, Councilman Bizcheck.
Thank you, Chair Wolfinger. This is a regularly scheduled annual piece of legislation that the Police Department applies for every year. This funding helps fund the DARE program for the 2025-2026 years. So, once again, we'll be asking for a waiver of the second and third readings and Councilmember Solley will be my second on this.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And when is the application due?
Chief, do we have?
We won't apply for it till May.
May, okay.
And why would we do suspension?
This is just to get the ball rolling, help them get their paperwork together and everything so we can get the grant applied for and ready to go. It takes some time, it takes some time.
The application is not due until later.
It takes time to get everything together and this legislation will authorize the Police Department to begin that process of bringing everything together.
Okay. Next item is Temporary Resolution 4-25, a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the Certificate of Appropriations with the County Auditor and the Wastewater Replacement and Improvement Fund, 623, 6023, and authorize the issuance of the then and now certificate for payment of bills. Coming from Water, Water Protection Control, Councilman Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We actually have three annual pieces up this evening. This first one allocates some carryover into the wastewater improvement fund. And I didn't know if Superintendent Nixon or Will Seder or someone wanted to speak to that, but it's, it's, it's an annual piece we do every year. So.
Okay, apparently no discussion?
Yeah, $554,000 carryover into the improvement fund.
Great. And?
Oh, sorry, that is three readings and Councilmember Tino will be my second.
Very good. Thank you. Temporary Resolution 5-25, a resolution to increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the Certificate of Other Sources with the County Auditor and the Wastewater Replacement and Improvement Fund, 6023, again, coming from Water, Water Protection Control, Councilman Wing.
Yes, thank you. This is the second annual piece this evening, $240,000. This is a fund-to-fund transfer into the wastewater replacement improvement fund, the 6023 fund.
Okay.
That'll also be three readings and Councilman Ales will be my second.
Very good, thank you. Any questions? Temporary Resolution 6-25, a resolution to amend the Certificate of Appropriations with the County Auditor, appropriate from the unencumbered balance, increase receipts, and complete a fund transfer in the Wastewater Fund, 6004, and in the Wastewater Utility Reserve Fund, 6029, and coming again from the Water, Water Protection Control Committee, Councilman Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our, our third annual piece this evening, this is a $2 million transfer and the purpose of this is to be within requirements of our bond covenant, to keep up the bond rating.
Right.
So, that'll also be three readings and Councilmember Tino will be my second.
Perfect, thank you. Temporary Resolution 7-25, a resolution to amend 2025 appropriation budgets and amend the Certificate of Appropriations with the County Auditor, obviously coming from Finance Committee and Auditor Nettles?
Yes, this is a 2025 budget cleanup piece. As I was going through and double-checking the budget that council passed versus the 2025 revenue and then the carryover cash brought over from 2024, I noticed some funds that, two of them that were going to be over-budgeted and two that didn't have enough budgeted that I'm required to have budgeted. So the first two, the Police and Fires Pension Fund and the Local Fiscal Recovery, I paid out those funds at the end of, in December 2024, but I failed to amend during that timeframe of all that budget, the final budget, to lower those budgets. So now I'm over-budgeted with the County Auditor appropriations being more than my actual cash. So I have to bring those down. The other two, we have more money in the fund than is budgeted, but I have to be dollar-for-dollar. We had some interest being paid into the bond retirement fund that has to be budgeted to go against a principal debt payment in that fund. And in the escrow fund, the rounding in the analytic software rounded me down 15 cents. So we've got escrowed cash for construction projects. That is waiting. And if we have to have a draw or payout for those finished water, wastewater construction projects, I have to have, I'm shy by 15 cents. So I have to budget and amend that to match the cash.
I know, it's hard to fathom that.
Yes, I've got to, I've got to balance everything.
And I appreciate you, per state audit, you've got to reconcile everything. And you're looking for suspension?
This can go through readings.
Oh, three readings, okay.
This can go through readings.
I'm just used to that suspension word. Okay, thank you. We'll do three readings and Councilman Solley, you'll be my second. Thank you. Next, we have Temporary Resolution 8-25, a resolution to set a 2025 revenue and expense budget in the Stormwater Utility, Utility Reserve Fund, 6019, amend the certificate with the County Auditor, and authorize the then and now certificates for payment of bills, again, coming from Finance Committee. And I'm going to call, who's going to discuss that? I wasn't, Mr. Nixon's not back there, I couldn't see.
No, he's not, sorry. And I, I didn't know the other pieces. Sorry, Councilman Wing, I couldn't speak to the other pieces earlier. But this one I can. So this piece, 8-25, deals with appropriations, then now certificates, et cetera, in the 6019 fund, which is the Stormwater Utility Reserve Fund. This and the piece that follows, which covers the other improvement funds for the Water Resources Departments, is an annual piece we do every year that appropriates the funds that we have left over from last year and allows us to, you know, keep paying our bills. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions. Like I said, this is an annual piece. We've done for as long as I can remember, done it this way outside of the typical budgeting process at the end of the year. And again, since we are waiting on invoices to pay our vendors, we do, are hoping we can get the suspension and have it approved in one reading.
So you have funds carried over from last year, is that?
Correct, yes. We have unspent funds in all these improvement accounts. And this is basically re-appropriating what we currently have and including the funds we expect to transfer in from other. Like, for example, my, in my stormwater fund here, I will transfer funds from my 6006 fund and that's been budgeted. And those will go to the 6019 to utilize for improvements either this year or in future years.
Yeah, it just seems as we do the budget each year and pass it in December and work through, through the fall, we know we're going to have carryovers. Why not encumber that through the first of the year? Then we don't have to have this legislation.
Sure, yeah, I honestly, I, yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, I can't say, I can't speak eloquently about that or have insight into that. This is something that's been done again for as long as I can remember. I don't know if anybody else here has any insight into why it's done that way. I think just the nature of the, the funds and where we have large dollar amounts and we have grants involved and whatnot. And sometimes things are tight. We, we need to know exactly what we have. And if we did it through the budget process, we wouldn't have that at the end of the year because that's approved before we've made all expenditures. So again, that's my best guess, but I'm sorry, Councilman, I can't address as to why this historically has been done that way.
Yes.
And I can't speak to that either, historically, why it was done that way. But Auditor Nettles and I were talking about this today, looking at the different funds and restrictions. And we are going to look and see if there's a way for us to encumber those on a purchase order to carry over into 2026 to see if we can avoid doing this legislation next year.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, make it cleaner, we've got the money, we don't have to worry about, you've got a bill waiting to be paid, or several bills waiting to be paid. And I appreciate we have to suspend. But on the same token, it, it kind of maybe cleans it up a little bit. When I say cleanup, maybe January, February, March, you'll have a cleanup piece when you have a better handle on exactly what your carryovers are and unspent funds. So maybe we can work on that perhaps.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any opposition. Like I said, this is, like I said, when I came into my position as Stormwater Manager, this is the, the way things have been done. So I'm kind of following in that regard, but I'm not unopposed to, or not opposed, rather, to, you know, doing things different if Councils, he's fit, or other members of administration. So, yeah.
And I just want to add is, is I, I do need suspension on these pieces that are setting the budgets in these improvement funds because we've already had OWDA come to the bank and take the debt payments out on January 3rd. So I cannot justify those payments with an expense transaction in my system to balance to the treasurer until these are passed. So I have to have a budget in order to make those transactions. So these are setting the 2025 budget, expense budget in those accounts, those funds. So I have to have that to make good a, a payment that was taken on January 3rd for the OWDA payments.
Home she didn't overdraws.
Uh huh. Try not to.
No, there's more than enough money in there to cover that.
Yes, I, there's money that I just have to.
Yeah, that's a perfect example why we should appropriate the money in the prior year so we don't have to get into some, I hate, when I was treasurer, I hated people taking money directly out of our checking account without our authority. So, very good. I appreciate that. And Temporary Resolution 925?
Yeah, again, same thing. This just covers the water and wastewater improvement funds, which are 6026, 6027, 6029, and 6030.
Right. Very good. Any questions, other questions of council? Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And we will be suspending each of those. And Councilman Solley, you'll do the second for me on 925. And Councilman Ales, you'll do the second for me on Resolution 825. Thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Wolfinger, on both of those pieces of legislation, since they're together and in the same committee, I was informed by the Law Director that we only need to do one motion to suspend for both. So we can just mention both of those and do a motion to suspend and then move to regular meeting, or regular reading of each piece of legislation.
That'd be great. Remind me because I'll probably forget between now and then.
Will do.
Temporary Resolution 10-25, a resolution stating the services to be provided by the municipal corporation to annex territory of blue label packaging for the expedited type-two annexation of parcel numbers 0270063600, 0270060800, 0270061100, consisting of 5.08 plus or minus acres in Pleasant Township and to declare an emergency. This is coming from Economic Development Committee, Councilman Ho.
Thank you. This piece just is a statement that we have to provide them within 20 days of the services that we're going to provide through the annex. It needs suspended because of the 20-day timeframe.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Law Director, any further comments on that? We've seen, we've all seen it before and this is an exception to the rule that we have to comply to the IR Vice Code. Thank you. No other resolutions to come before? Ordinances, temporary ordinance 1-25, an ordinance to accept the final plat for the Fairfield Park development, coming from Code Enforcement and Zoning Committee, Councilman Solley.
Thank you, Chairman. This will be the first of three readings and we have Chazal and Carter here to discuss this legislation.
Good evening, everyone. So Temporary Ordinance 125 is just asking for your acceptance of the final plat for Fairfield Park development. The Planning Commission did pass this last month. I did send around a kind of an explanation of what you were looking at for the plat. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask. And I also have Joe Thomas here from Metro to give you just a brief explanation on the project.
Good evening. Again, Joe Thomas, I'm with Metro Development. We're the actual owner and developer of Fairfield Park. It is a 240 apartment unit complex roughly on 12 acres. It's a mixture of one, two, and three bedrooms. Location is North Columbus Street and Hubbard Drive, right next to the 84 Lumber, and adjacent to us, two, two car dealerships. And then there's a small roundabout with a couple of businesses there on Hubbard Drive. We also are participating in the citywide CRA, so there will be affordability component to this development. And I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions?
By chance, you bring any, like, artistic prints or anything? I'm curious what the, this is going to look like.
I'm sorry, I did not. I apologize. We went through a rezoning process on this property and just to give, I guess I can give you a visual explanation, but it's, they're three-story breezeway apartments with a mixture of stone, shake siding, and horizontal siding and some board and batten with associated garages with the development as well. So here tonight, we're trying to basically address a, there's a subdivision plat that was on two commercial lots that we purchased. We're going to simply be combining those lots, but it's the larger commercial lot that we purchased as well. So we're, you know, here for the plat process, but I apologize for not bringing illustrations for you.
And then access to the complex, is that, I understand there's going to be two entrances?
Correct. One on Hubbard Drive and one on North Columbus Street. We'll have a community center at the entrance to North Columbus Street. And there's 10 associated apartment buildings and then some associated garages as well.
Okay. And there's, I guess there's going to be a turn lane built on Columbus Street?
That's correct.
So what direction will that be going?
There'll be, well, it'll be a left-hand turn lane into the complex. So, and that's part of, actually, in the county still.
Okay.
The county project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Solley, we have exterior elevations that went to Planning Commission and we can provide you with those if you'd like to see them.
I didn't see any.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And your second is Elena?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And three readings?
Three readings.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Next item is Temporary, Temporary Ordinance 2-25, an ordinance to amend Permanent Ordinance 54-24 to and to declare an emergency, coming from Finance Committee. And is Alita here?
She's not, I apologize. She thought that she, I've been texting with her. She thought that she had to come to the actual council meeting of the whole and not finance. She'll be here in about 15 minutes. So if you wanted to keep discussing everything on the list and do the departmental update, hopefully she'll be here before you're done with your Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Moving on to Temporary Ordinance 3-25, an ordinance to repeal Lancaster codified ordinance, Part 7, Business Regulations Code, Chapter 711, 715, 721, 731, 785, and 791 of the codified ordinance of the City of Lancaster, coming from Law Committee and Councilman Kreis.
Yes, thank you. This is legislation to repeal six unneeded or obsolete ordinances that are included in the Business Regulation Code. They were passed between the 50s and 80, 1950s and 1980s and relate to businesses that no longer exist or need enforced. We can go through readings and Mr. Bizcheck is my second.
Very good. Any questions, further comments? Thank you. Temporary Ordinance 4-25, an ordinance to amend Permanent Ordinance 54-24 to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into a lease contract with the Fairfield County Commissioners for the second floor of the city annex building, 123 East Chestnut Street, for juvenile court services, coming from the Administrative Services Committee, Councilman Lutner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is just to amend a three-year lease to a one-year lease, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. We discussed this at our December meeting and we're talking about a three-year lease to the county for the second floor of the city annex building. And we have since decided just to make that a one-year lease. So that's all this is.
And it was, it's an increase in a rate of 3%?
Uh, yes, over the previous year's lease.
Okay.
Yep.
I know we had discuss, quite a bit of discussion last time we talked about it in December. Any other comments, questions from council regarding this?
And if you'd be so kind as being my second?
If I don't forget.
We're good.
Thank you.
Councilman Wolfinger?
Yes.
Is there any way that we could respectfully request suspension on this since it was previously approved in December? In order for us to enter into this lease, we would need to approve it from city council. And then it also has to be approved through the county commissioners once we approve it. And we are currently operating without a lease agreement because ours expired in December. So if there's any way to respectfully request suspension, or if not, maybe at least two readings instead of three readings, we would be ever so grateful.
You would be. Well, they have a council, they have a commissioners meeting tomorrow morning, so maybe you'd like to take it off. Is there any objection from council to suspend second, third? So be it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No other ordinances to come before council. Let's get into departmental updates.
Good evening, council. Service Director Woody asked me to give you a little update on what our department's been doing for the last seven days, eight days, nine days, somewhere in there. If you haven't been outside your house last week, you know it snowed. So a little bit about what we've been doing. I put together a little map of what our routes look like and a little bit of data about the two storms we, we handled. The first storm came about a week ago, Sunday, on the 6th, the 5th. When the weathermen started getting all excited the week before that, we started watching the news and, and monitoring things. And then sure enough, Sunday rolled in and we actually got what they predicted. So we called crews in at 4 o'clock on Sunday and we worked them 24/7 until midnight on Tuesday, going into Wednesday. A little bit about that event. We received between four and six inches of snow, depending on what part of town you were in. And in that event, as you can see, we used 510 tons of salt. Our current salt per ton cost this year is $69.65. So we spread about 35, a little over $35,000 worth of salt. And we also added to that a brine mixture, which we pre-wet the salt with as it comes out of the trucks. And we also use it for brining applications ahead of the storm, which we actually were able to do because it did not rain prior to the event. So we actually used 15,600 gallons of that. That only cost us 46 cents a gallon to make. So between those two types of product, we spent $42,000 applying salt and brine. As you note here, I, we, we actually have 10 trucks available to push snow and the salt. We actually have eight dedicated routes, which are indicated on the map that I've given to you. The dark lines are actually representative of those maps. And just to give you a little rundown on that is, when we go out and start, start our snow and ice operations, those are the, what we call the main routes. Those are the routes we hit first. Those are the routes we make sure are clear. we hit first. Those are the routes we make sure are clear. As it is snowing, until the snow is pretty much done coming down, we will stay on those routes. I've broken them down. They are color-coded, and I've broken down how many lane miles each of those routes is. And for you those who don't know what a lane mile is, a lane mile is when you drive one direction in one lane. So for instance, our Route 1, which is our west side route, is 22.6 lane miles. So one driver has to drive that many lane miles to cover that route. In that event alone, we had 823 man-hours doing that one event, and we had a total driven miles of just over 5,000 miles. That's about 559 miles each one of those trucks drove in that 56-hour period. Then along came a little skiff event last Friday into Saturday morning. That was a quick one. It was only one to three inches, but it snowed all night. The guys were in, they were pretty much on the main routes all night. So we worked them to get that cleaned up, and then they were able to move into the residential. So when we call guys in, we have, we only have 20 guys in the department right now that can, or 21 guys that can come in and push snow. So we have 10 on one shift, 11 on the other. There's a mechanic on each one of those shifts, so they technically don't drive a route, but they can if need be with one of the extra trucks. At this point, we have an alternate route who can assist. He gets out and helps the bigger trucks in the cul-de-sacs where they can't get. That's not really a dedicated route, because he's all over the place. So we might have 11 guys on the road at any given, one given time, but any of these are dedicated to these routes alone. Once we get these main routes open, and we're confident that we don't need to be throwing any more solid at them, these guys will team up into pairs of two, and they start getting into residentials. Our main-going residentials, because that's probably where your complaints are going to come from, your constituents, is I haven't seen a plow in front of my house. Well, you will. Technically, what we try to do is we get at least one pass into a residential, one pass out, at least to get things open up, and then we start pushing things back to the curb. So our strategy is to do that, but parked cars and people driving around kind of make it difficult sometimes. So if we don't get to your house right away, we will eventually. All of our trucks are monitored with the SAM-SARA AVL system, so we know where they are at any given time. So we can pull it up on a map, and we can actually tell when a truck passed a certain address, what time they passed it, and whether or not the salt spinner was on. So if there's any, if there's ever any doubt, anybody has any concerns, you can get hold of me or one of my guys in the office, and we can verify that, yes, we have driven all 400 lane miles of our streets. Carrie rode around one night with the guys. Councilwoman Hoop came in. She got to ride around, get a little bit of an education. And any of anybody out there who wants to ride around and look at the snowflakes as they come down, give me a call. So pretty much, that's it. You might get a call about a mailbox. Yes, we will hit a mailbox now and then. Mailboxes are required to have the door or the front of the mailbox one foot behind the face of the curb. And every now and then, we will jump a curb, especially when the snow gets a little deep, and we will take it out. And we will replace those. But if your mailbox is not installed properly, you may not get it replaced right away. And there's always the Law Director's Office. You can contact her if you want to, if a resident wants to file a claim, and that'll come back to me. And if we can determine that the mailbox is installed properly, we will replace it. If it's a fancy one, it's got Brixhall around it, you won't get that back, but you will get a functioning mailbox back. Any questions?
Questions of council?
Just to thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Forgive me, I was taking notes. You might have mentioned this. How's our inventory of salt for the balance of the year?
Well, we started with about 3,400 tons, and we've used a total of 753. So we're looking real good right now. We'll get, in about a month, we'll probably order our first load from ODOT, or from our vendor through ODOT. So.
Right.
But we're not, we're not.
That's good news.
Just wasting it. So we're doing good.
Good. Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. You going to talk?
Good evening, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to let me address you tonight. Every year, we do, we publicize an annual report typically at the beginning of February, just compiling data and statistics at the police department. However, those data and statistics are pretty much useless if you're not measuring outcomes and doing something with the data. So what I wanted to do is, one, promise that we're still on track and on task to put that annual report out by the beginning of February. But I wanted to give you a broad overview and rundown of some of the more important data that you would be interested in and your constituents would be interested in here tonight. Three things that I typically hear the most from council members or citizens in general have to do with hiring, community engagement, crime suppression, what we're doing about certain crimes, et cetera. Hiring, our detective bureau and background investigators continue to have their pedal on the metal. They've hired, or at least vetted, five sworn officers through the process last year. So we're at 77 out of 79 authorized officers. So we're in really good shape there. We're very close to being fully staffed. With 25 coming, we're expecting about five to six retirements, so we'll continue to have to keep our focus on hiring. But I've said it before, you guys have allowed us the ability to hire a good quality human being first, as opposed to a piece of paper saying somebody's certified and they've done the job before. I'd much rather just have a good human being first, and so that's who we continue to hire. And we've done really well with that, and very appreciative of that. Community engagement, despite the focus on hiring, our community services unit and officers, SWAT officers, detective bureau, just everybody in general, all the staff, dispatchers at the PD, they went to over 160 community events last year. That's darn near an event every couple few days, which is pretty amazing. So they're out there embedded in the community. That's everything from craze training, workplace violence training, safety town, youth educational programs. So they're out there in the community. That's probably triple what we were doing a few years ago. And so they're really, really breaking their back to get out there and be involved in the community, and I think that's paying dividends. The bread and butter of the annual report typically is just the crime suppression numbers and the call for service data. Sweet, again, for the second year in a row, we're going to push 70 calls for service, 70,000 calls for service per year. To put that in perspective, a few years ago, we were hovering around the 50,000 to 55,000 range. So the proactivity has skyrocketed along with the calls for service. This population just tends to get busier and busier, and our officers are working very hard. So 70,000 calls for service again this year. The two major areas that I get asked about the most are quality of life. So for instance, burglaries and traffic enforcement. There's some pretty encouraging numbers that you'll see that I want to report tonight. For instance, our burglary numbers, which affects every resident in this community. We're still hovering in the 160 to 180 burglaries per year range. I believe Mayor McDaniel and previous Chief McDaniel can attest that we used to average about a burglary a year. We were around 350 to 400 burglaries a year. We're hovering around the 160 to 180 range. I, again, this year, will not be as confident to say what directive is actually bringing that number down. I can't say the numbers come sharply down in the last couple of years, but to give some reference on what the officers are doing out there, we have two main categories that we call proactive measures to fight burglary, robbery, crimes of violence, et cetera. And those are area watches and business checks. Those are just proactive measures of officers being out in the neighborhoods, looking at problem areas before they start, listening to community members, and being in the area if they call if something's happening. So for instance, in '24, we ran 14,000 area watches. We used to average about 3,000 area watches a year. We did 14,000 last year. Business checks, we did 17,000. We used to average about 4,500. And in turn, I believe those burglary numbers came down, cut in half. Also, the traffic enforcement, I think it's a fairly common theme, my family included sometimes, to say that, you know, we're not out there doing as much traffic enforcement as we should. I'm sure you guys hear the same, the same thing. I will die on that hill. The officers break their back to do quality traffic enforcement. They don't pull people over for too much window 10 or not using a turn signal. They do accident-causing violations. And for point of reference on the frequency of that, we did 4,500 traffic stop measures last year. Typically, going back to '22 and prior, we were running about 2,500. So we've almost doubled the amount of traffic enforcement, and these numbers are very encouraging. Here, our auto accidents have gone down on average from 1,000 to 1,100 a year. Last year, we went to 424. Auto accident with injury, we were averaging around 300 to 400 a year, 398 a couple of years prior. We had 89 last year. So I can confidently say a lot of that targeted enforcement is working. I can't promise you a magic bean every year and say if we do the exact same thing, we'll have these numbers again. But these officers are working very, very hard to bring these numbers down. And now we have two to three years of consistency of these numbers being down. So I'm very proud of the work they're doing. They make my job very, very, very easy when they're out there doing what the public wants them to do. A couple of other categories I'll mention really quick. Person in crisis, that continues to be a call, a mental health call that we see creeping up. Again, last year was no stranger to that. We had 384 calls for service involving person in crisis. And then our directed patrol unit had its first full year of operation last year with a full staff. They are supposed to have five people in that unit. Again, that's a unit that doesn't respond to calls for service. They respond to quality of life issues and things that the citizens complain on. They typically had around three full-time officers working in that last year. It's supposed to consist of three K-9 officers and two dedicated non-K-9 officers because of an injury and a promotion. We only had about three, but the numbers are going to blow your socks off with that unit. They worked 757 days last year combined with the three officers. They issued 297 citations for accident-causing violations and problem area violations. They had 304 K-9 deployments. They took 70 guns off the street out of three officers. That's more guns off the street than our entire patrol division combined. 230 grams of fentanyl were seized, 690 grams of methamphetamine were seized, 550 grams of other drugs such as cocaine and heroin were seized off the streets. To give you some reference, there's 453 grams in a pound. They're taking pounds of drugs off the street. In addition to that, patrol calls, which often get backed up, and we have issues with staffing sometimes on patrol calls, they responded to 905 patrol assistance calls, meaning that that's not a backup officer that had to come out of the patrol rotation. That directed patrol unit went and backed up a patrol officer on a call. They deployed 206 warrants, so they wrote paper on 206 either objects or residences and carried those out, had 184 felony charges and 155 misdemeanor charges. So again, that's just a broad overview of the activity, but that unit is invaluable. The officers are invaluable. The dispatchers have done a phenomenal job with what they've been given, so very proud of that group of people over there, despite the obstacles that they face. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer, but I just wanted to give you a brief rundown, being that it's the first meeting of the year.
Not a question, but just want to say thank you to the men and women of the Police Department for all you do for the city. Thank you. Those are great numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Anybody else wish, there you go, another chief.
Good evening. My update tonight is regards to our EMS billing program. About three weeks ago, our new company, Med account, started actively billing for our transports. It's been a long time, a lot of work. It seemed like a mountain of paperwork, a lot of collaboration from a lot of the city departments and a lot of other agencies to get this up and running. So I am pleased to say that our new company is up billing as they should. Another thing that we realized was going on, probably about three months ago, we started getting phone calls from residents. We weren't aware that Change Healthcare, our previous billing partner, who had, for history, back in February 2024, had a breach, stopped all activity. EMS billing revenue went flat after February. And they started billing our residents again. We weren't aware of that till we received an invoice, and residents were calling us. They were very confused because past practice for the last 20 years, it's a resident who's transported by Lancaster Fire to the hospital. Our billing company bills, their insurance company, or Medicare, they receive a payment. Sometimes there's a balance between what was charged and what was paid. Residents were never supposed to receive a bill for that. They did not follow that past practice. They started sending those bills out. So our office, I know City Hall, some other agencies are receiving some confusing phone calls for the citizens. If anybody's listening, or you get any phone calls with your constituents, my advice is to tell them to disregard those bills, just like everybody else has for the last two decades. Hopefully, this won't last much longer. They do have a 90-day wind-down period. October 28th of 2024 is the last date of service that Change Healthcare will be billing for. They have a 90-day wind-down, so it'll be roughly at the end of January when they should cease and stop all the billing. And moving forward, Med account, who has much better customers, customer service, and does respond to phone calls and emails, they'll take it over for us. So is there any questions on EMS billing or anything with the fire department?
Thank you for supporting our residents, chief.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Any other department updates?
Am I allowed to give an update?
Absolutely. We're here all night.
So I have just a couple of updates that I wanted to make council aware of, and that is, if you weren't aware, our fire chief, Steve Mathen, did retire after over 30 years of service with the City of Lancaster. He refused to let us give him public acknowledgement or a farewell party. So I am doing this now, hoping that he's watching, because he can't stop me. He did a great job, and we are truly thankful for all of his years of service. So we are working with the Civil Service Commission to go through the process of hiring a new fire chief. So in the interim, we do have Acting Chief Slade Schultz, and so thank you, chief, for all that you've done in the interim. I also wanted to let you know that an update on the City Hall project. We are still on target for the City Hall renovation project, the exterior of City Hall. The Architect School, Lee Caldwell, is presenting their plans to the Historic Commission later this week. And once that's approved, hopefully approved, then we'll be able to finalize specs and get it out to bid. So again, we're hoping to start work this spring on City Hall. I also wanted to let you know, I know that I saw several of you downtown for the ball drop that is done by DDL. I know Amanda's out here somewhere, I think, and partnering with the Lancaster Parks Department, who does an amazing job with this, with the event. But we couldn't do it without Interface Video as well helping. And I wanted to just share with you, because I thought this was very interesting, Interface sent me an email saying that we had viewers in 22 states and three countries that were watching it live in Lancaster, Ohio. So a huge thanks to Amanda and DDL, our Parks Department, and Interface Video for broadcasting that and allowing 22 states and three countries to watch our live broadcast in our downtown Lancaster. So I thought that was very interesting and wanted to share that all with you. And then my final would be just a huge thanks to all of our city departments. With the inclement weather that we just experienced, a little bit more than we're typically used to or that we usually get at one time, I will say police and fire were obviously very busy dealing with accidents related to inclement weather. You already heard Superintendent Dietz talking about working around the clock to try and clear our streets. Our water department, you know they got called out for some water leaks, and they had to do this in the snow and the freezing cold, fixing water leaks, and they were called out in the evening. So again, huge thanks to all of our departments. But I also wanted to just kind of throw out there, thanks to all the residents that cleared their sidewalks. That's a huge help as well, because we do have a lot of residents that have mobility issues. And so clearing sidewalks is a huge help. So thanks to the residents that were able to assist in cleaning sidewalks as well. But I also kind of wanted to throw out that if we do have residents that don't have the ability to clear their sidewalks, call us at City Hall. We have a lot of volunteer groups that contact me specifically, asking if anybody needs help clearing sidewalks, and I'm more to help, I'm more than happy to help make that connection for residents if they do need assistance cleaning sidewalks in the future. And that's my update.
Well, thank you. Mayor, would you like to make an update?
I think everybody else is pretty much covered.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it very much. I assume there are more else in the audience from the city, as I was going to say. Perfect. Thank you. Moving on to tonight's meeting prep. Moving on to tonight's meeting prep.
Councilman Wolfinger, did you see that the clerk of court came in? She might have snuck in. Okay, I just wanted to make sure you saw she was here.
Yeah, she's on probation right now.
Oh, okay.
But thank you, I appreciate that.
We have no special updates for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. And any other items for finance? I hear none. And we have a guest, Velita. Come on up. And we are going to discuss temporary ordinance number 225, an ordinance to amend Permanent Ordinance 54-24 and declare an emergency coming from Finance Committee. And if you could fill in your needs.
Sure, sure. When the temporary ordinance was put in place prior to the budget being passed, I had my staff, the number is the same, just for the record, I'm not adding any staff, it's just a move within my staff. I had that, had given that for the council's consideration when we were, when you were passing the budget. And at that time, all of those numbers made sense, it all lined up. At that time, I was also in the process, just for some background, I have two employees in my office who are both beyond their 30th year with the city and in the clerk's office. I started the process of thinking forward in a five-to-seven-year plan as to who it is that takes the place of those people. One of those employees is my chief deputy, and she's been the chief deputy for, she preceded me in the office as the chief deputy. The other is what I deem my administrative deputy clerk. The two of them, as you can imagine with 30 years of experience, have a wealth of knowledge that is not easily replaced. So I've started the process of planning who in my office, it seems, will be the people who will step into those roles. And it's not an easy role to step into, either one of them. But in the meantime, I've also been made aware, if you look at the change that I'm asking for, the change is taking one person who, at that time, was in the C range on my budget, and I'm asking to add that person to the E range because I have, outside of my chief deputy, my administrative deputy, everyone else in my office is a deputy clerk, with the exception of three positions that I call supervisors within the civil, the criminal, and the traffic division. I had someone in a supervisory role in the traffic division, and it came to my attention the week before Christmas that that person is very actively seeking employment elsewhere. So when I'm looking at a five-to-seven-year plan, she ceases to be a plan in five to seven years when I know that she doesn't intend to stay in my office. So there is someone who I would like to move into that position without harming the person that had held that position. I want to put this person in because she has been a part of my plan going forward, very specifically looking at my chief deputy position and the roles that she takes care of in my office. And this person that I'm asking to be bumped from a C to an F is absolutely already starting to learn some of the bookkeeping, the jury duty work that my chief deputy currently does. So that is why I'm asking for just a change, not, again, not in the number of employees that I have, just that I have. I had six in the C range, one in the E range. I'm asking that the one person from the C range be bumped to a, to an, I'm sorry, an E range, because she is going to be in a supervisory position. Not my chief deputy yet, just in a supervisory role.
Questions of council? Go back to you.
Thank you.
Councilman Ailes, you'll be my second.
Yes.
And one reading suspension, as we've talked before. That is everything we needed to discuss, and I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Councilman Ailes. Second, whatever. I need to do a recall. Did you say roll call vote on this?
No.
I do not, okay. All those in favor, please sign and say aye. I do. And we are dismissed.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Great Automotive Service is just around the corner at the Buckeye family of dealerships, whether it's Buckeye Nissan in Hilliard, Georgesville Nissan at the Georgesville Auto Mall, Buckeye Honda of Lancaster, Buckeye Toyota of Lancaster, or Buckeye Collision Center in Hilliard. Team Buckeye services all makes and models at each location, utilizing modern practices with hundreds of years of experience, giving you peace of mind.
Please rise if you are able and join me in a moment of prayer. God grant us the serenity to accept the things that we cannot change, the courage to change the things we can, and finally, the wisdom to know the difference. I now call the January 13th, 2025 Lancaster City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Mr. Ailes?
Here.
Sorry. Mr. Bizjack?
Here.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Here.
Mrs. Hoop?
Here.
Mr. Luftenberg?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Ms. Teener?
Here.
Mr. Solly?
Here.
Mr. Wing?
Here.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes, here.
Please let the record reflect that all 10 members of Lancaster City Council are present this evening, and I just remind everybody, please turn on your microphones for purposes of the regular meeting. We will now move to the reading and disposal of the journal.
Regular meeting minutes dated December 9th, 2024, and special meeting minutes December 23rd, 2024.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Reports of city officials.
Email dated January 3rd, 2025 regarding 2024 mandated reporting of seized money accounts submitted by Police Chief Snyder. Email dated January 2nd, 2025 regarding 2025 VIP purchase orders submitted by Auditor Nettles. Email dated December 31st, 2024 regarding deposit of public money city policy submitted by Auditor Nettles. Email dated December 31st, 2024 regarding 2025 Planning Commission planning packets submitted by City Planner Carter. Email dated December 27th, 2024 regarding cemetery rules updates submitted by Superintendent Dietz. Email dated December 26th, 2024 regarding medical healthcare clinic updates submitted by HR Coordinator Williams. Series of emails dated December 19th, 2024 through December 23rd, 2024, council members, council clerk, IT Director Starr, Service Safety Director Woody, Law Director Hall, regarding requests for special council meeting. I'm sorry, I did those all backwards today. Email dated December 20th, 2024 regarding financial disclosure statement submitted by Mr. Solly. Services of emails dated, series of emails dated January 7th and 8th, 2025, between City Planner Commissioner Card, or Chaslin Carter and Mr. Luftenberg regarding final plot for Fairfield Park. Email dated January 8th, 2025 regarding a mail incident in the Pickerington area submitted by Police Chief Nick Snyder. Email dated January 8th, 2025 regarding income tax December collections report submitted by Tax Commissioner Emmy Hamilton.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We now move to communications.
Voicemail dated December 13th, 2024 regarding public hearing being held January 25th, 2025 from John Oberly. Series of emails dated December 17th, 2024 between Melissa Burns, Circerville Clerk, and Clerk Scott regarding insight on how the city of Lancaster permanently retains their ordinances and resolutions. Voicemail dated December 17th, 2024 regarding public hearing being held January 25th, 2025 from John McGraw of MRJJ 1 LLC. Mail received January 7th, 2025 regarding liquor license for Red Lobster number 553 from Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Email data January 8th, 2025 regarding DDL and SSID annual gathering invitations submitted by Amanda Everett by Downtown Destination Lancaster.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the communications. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We have no special presentations and awards this evening. Do we have any petitions and memorials?
No petitions or memorials this evening.
We have now reached the time in the agenda where it is the permission of voters and taxpayers to address council. Do we have anybody who wishes to address city council this evening? Seeing none, we will continue with regular order of business. Move to the reports of standing committees.
Finance committee agenda dated January 13th, 2025 submitted by Mr. Wolfinger.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We now move the reports of special committees.
There are no reports of special committees presented to council this evening.
Thank you. There is no public hearing scheduled for this evening.
Mr. President?
Yes, council member.
I'd like to go out and order business and make a motion to appoint Councilman Solly to his committee assignments. He has the chair of code enforcement and zoning, and also is a member of the Finance Committee and Safety Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint our new council member, Mr. Solly, to his committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Congratulations on your committee assignments this evening. So we will now move on to the reading of resolutions for tonight's meeting, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Resolution 130-24.
A resolution to authorize then-andnow certificates for the Community Development Block Grant 2073, CHIP Home Program Fund 2083, and for the Healthy Homes Grant 2026, year-end 2024 project expenditures. Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoops and Mrs. Kreitz.
Councilmember Hoop.
I just drew a blank.
I think we might be a motion.
No, this is an annual piece. It's a then-and-now to pay any invoices that will be received in 2025 that were incurred in 2024.
Okay. We'll take a motion. Motion to pass.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. So I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record resolution. Give me a second. Okay.
First.
Now I just can't stop laughing. The Temporary Resolution 130-24.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 130-24. I would ask if there's any discussion, but you've already done that. Is there any further discussion from our council at this time? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solly?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 130-24 passes 10 to 0. We'll now move to the second reading of resolutions, and there are none this evening. We will now be moving into the first reading of resolutions, beginning with Temporary Resolution 125. I believe that Temporary Resolution 125 and Temporary Resolution 225 are both going to be subject to suspension this evening, so... Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, the clerk will read both of those.
Would you like me to read both of them first and then?
Correct.
Okay. Temporary Resolution 125 is a resolution to authorize city departments to dispose of the city property no longer needed via auction or internet auction in 2025 and to declare an emergency. This is Law Committee with Mrs. Kreitz and Mr. Bisjack. And Temporary Resolution 225, a resolution in support of the Ohio Municipal League's challenge of AT&amp;T's tariff application at the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio and to declare an emergency. Again, this is Law Committee with Mrs. Kreitz and then Mr. Wolfinger.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of resolutions temporarily numbered 1-25 and 2-25.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 125 and Temporary Resolution 225. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend?
Yes, thank you. Temporary Resolution 125, we are asking for suspension so that we can start our internet auctions of property that's no longer needed, and we need this passed before that can be begun. And then also to join a Utilities Commission action against AT&amp;T's tariff application.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
No.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Solly?
I have to abstain because of my current situation.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Did I get you? Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes 8 to 1 with one abstention. We would now move to the third, or the reading of Temp... Oh, sorry, excuse me. You can go now.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Resolution temporarily numbered 1-25.
Second. A motion, a second, to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 125. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, we will now move forward with the roll call.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solly?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
I'm sorry, I abstained, abstention.
For both of them?
Well, are we doing separate?
No, this is just Temporary Resolution 125, so...
225 was an abstain, okay. No, you're fine. Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
So Temporary Resolution 125 passes 10 to 0. We will now move to Temporary Resolution 225.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Resolution temporarily numbered 2-25.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 225. Hearing no discussion, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solly, you're abstaining. Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution passes, Temporary Resolution 225 passes 9 to 0 with one abstention. Now move on to the reading of Temporary Resolution 325.
An ordinance to repeal Lancaster codified ordinance, part... Oh, not ordinance, I apologize. Wrong side.
You're okay.
A resolution to authorize the Lancaster Police Department to apply for the 2025-2026 Drug Use Prevention Grant. Safety Committee, Mr. Bisjack and Mr. Solly.
Councilmember Bisjack.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading for Temporary Resolution 3-25.
We have a motion, a second, to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 325. Any discussion?
Not at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll on the motion to suspend.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
No.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solly?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes 9 to 1. Councilmember Bisjack.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 3-25.
We have a motion, a second, to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 325. Any further discussion, Councilmember Bisjack?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing to add is that this is a regular piece of legislation that the police department asks for every year. This is to apply for money for the DARE program for the 2025-2026 year.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please call and roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solly?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 325 passes 10 to 0. Now move on to Temporary Resolution 425.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance, amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the wastewater replacement and improvement fund 6023, and authorize the issuance of a then and now certificates for payments of bills. Water, Water Pollution Committee and Mr. Wing with Mrs. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This will be the first of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 425. Temporary Resolution 525.
A resolution to increase and appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate of other sources with the county auditor in the wastewater replacement and improvement fund 6023. This is with Water, Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wing.
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 525. Temporary Resolution 625.
A resolution to amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor, appropriate from the unencumbered balance, increase receipts, and complete a fund transfer in the wastewater fund 6004 and in the wastewater utility reserve fund 6029. Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
First of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 625. Temporary Resolution 725.
A resolution to amend 2025 appropriation budgets and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor. This is through Finance Committee, Mr. Wolfinger and Mr. Solly.
Councilmember Wolfinger.
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 725. Temporary Resolution 825.
A resolution to set a 2025 revenue and expense budget in the stormwater utility reserve 6019, amend the certificates with the county auditor, and authorize then and now certificates for the payments of bills. This is through Finance Committee, Mr. Wolfinger and Mr. Ailes.
And we also can take, I believe these are both going for suspension. We can also do Temporary Resolution 925 for purposes of suspension.
Okay. Temporary Resolution 9-25, a resolution to set a 2025 revenue and expense budget in the water construction fund 6026, water utility reserve fund 6027, wastewater utility reserve fund 6029, and wastewater construction fund 6030. Amend the certificates with the county auditor and authorize then and now certificates for payments of bills. And once again, through Finance Committee, Mr. Wolfinger and Mr. Solly.
Councilmember Wolfinger.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspends its rules and waives the second and third readings of Temporary Resolutions 7, or 8-25 and 9-25.
We can take one second. Thank you.
I'm good.
Thank you. Any discussion? Councilmember Wolfinger?
No, as we discussed in Finance Committee, both of these are dealing with budget adjustments and setting the budget for 2025.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll on the motions to suspend 825 and Temporary Resolution 925.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solly?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second, third reading of Temporary Resolution 825 and 925, pass 10 to 0. Councilmember Wolfinger.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 8-25.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 825. Any further discussion?
No further discussion.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solly?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 825 passes 10 to 0. Temporary Resolution 925.
Mr...oh, sorry.
Councilmember.
Right, okay. I didn't want to walk on you.
Sorry.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 9-25.
Mr. Solly.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 925. Any further discussion?
No.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solly?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 925 passes 10 to 0. We now move to Temporary Resolution 1025.
A resolution stating the services to be provided by the municipal corporation to annex territory of blue label packaging company for the expedited type 2 annexation of parcel number 0270063600, 0270060800, 0270061100, consisting of 5.08 plus or minus acres in the Pleasant Township and to declare an emergency. This is through Economic Development Committee and Mrs. Hoop and Mrs. Kreitz.
Councilmember Hoop.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of Temporary Resolution 10-25.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 1025. Any further discussion?
Just that we're asking for suspension, as discussed in Finance, because there is a limit of 20 days for us to provide them with a statement of services.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll on the motion to suspend.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solly?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 1025 passes 10 to 0. Councilmember Hoop.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 10-25.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 1025. Any further discussion?
No.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solly?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 1025 passes 10 to 0. We have no further reading of resolutions. We will now move on to the reading of ordinances. There are no third readings this evening of any ordinances. We will now move to the second reading of ordinances, beginning with Temporary Ordinance 5624.
An ordinance, excuse me, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and, or to acquire a permanent access easement necessary to perform maintenance activities on stormwater infrastructure. This is through Water, Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
This is the second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 5624. Temporary Ordinance 5724.
An ordinance to amend the zoning map subject to passage of the annexation of 22.08 plus or minus acres in Greenfield Township and to declare an emergency. This is through Economic Development Committee with Mrs. Hoop and Mr. Wing.
Councilmember Hoop.
This is the second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 57. Is that the star?
Is that the star?
Oh, yeah, that's an amendment.
Okay. 57... -24 star, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we have to...
Do we not have to pass the star?
Oh, we did.
We could wait till the third.
Yeah, you can do it now or you can wait till the third reading. It doesn't make any difference.
Okay, you're, okay, because in the past, we've been doing it at the time.
Yeah.
We start.
That's fine, but you don't have to. Here, you have to go the full three readings, and you have a public hearing at the next meeting, so you're gonna probably address it more in depth than anyway.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Law Director. So, second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 57-24 star. First, we now move to first reading of ordinances, beginning with Temporary Ordinance 1-25.
An ordinance to accept the final plat for the Fairfield Park development. This is through Code Enforcement and Zoning Committee, Mr. Solly and Mrs. Hoop.
Councilmember Solly.
The president's to be the first of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 1-25. Move to Temporary Ordinance 2-25.
An ordinance to amend Permanent Ordinance 54-24 and to declare an emergency. This is through Finance Committee, Mr. Wolfinger and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wolfinger.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waives the second and third reading of Temporary Ordinance 2-25.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Ordinance 2-25. Any discussion? Councilmember Wolfinger.
Briefly, this, as we heard from Mrs. Sloan, that we're making some personnel changes and grade changes in responsibilities in the reports office.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll on the motion to suspend.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solly?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Ordinance 225-25 passes ten to zero. Councilmember Wolfinger.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance 2-25.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance 2-25. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solly?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance 2-25 passes ten to zero. We now move to Temporary Ordinance 325.
An ordinance to repeal Lancaster codified ordinance part 7, Business Regulation Code, Chapter 711, 715, 721, 731, 785, and 791 of the codified ordinance of the city of Lancaster. This is through Law Committee, Mrs. Kreitz and Mr. Bisjack.
Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, first of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 3-25. Temporary Ordinance 4-25.
An ordinance to amend Permanent Ordinance 54-24 to authorize the service safety director to enter into a lease contract with the Fairfield County Commissioners for the second floor of the city annexed building 123 East Chestnut Street for juvenile court services. This is through Administrative Services, Mr. Luchtenberg and Mr. Wolfinger.
Councilmember Luchtenberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of ordinance temporarily numbered 4-25.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Ordinance 4-25. Any discussion? Councilmember Luchtenberg.
No, sir.
Thank you. Hearing no discussion, please call the roll on the motion to suspend.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solly?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second, third reading of Temporary Ordinance 4-25 passes ten to zero. Councilmember Luchtenberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record ordinance temporarily numbered 4-25.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance 4-25. Any discussion? Councilmember Luchtenberg.
As we discussed in the business meeting, this is just replacing a three-year lease with a one-year lease for this space to the county.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solly?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary Ordinance 4-25 passes ten to zero. We do have tabled legislation, but it's my understanding, Law Director, that we're not taking this. The recommendation is not to take this off the table this evening.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we have concluded the reading of legislation for this evening. And we'll move on with the business agenda. Unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Any council members with unfinished business this evening? Hearing none. New business. Does any council member have any new business this evening? Councilmember Teener.
Yes, I just wanted to make note to remind everybody that if you have your money drafted